I'm calling to order this meeting of the April 24, 2018 Silver City Town Council. To order, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The date today is May 15.
Yeah, correction, uh, May the 15th. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Next item, and number four, is proclamations, and we have one. Since, uh, since the week of May 6 through May the 12th is municipal clerks' week, the city would like to make a proclamation to recognize this. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial county, and international professional organizations, and whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Ken Ladner, Mayor of the town of Silver City, do recognize the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018, as municipal clerks' week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Ann O'Mackey, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Do you want to say your name?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and councilors. I really appreciate this recognition of municipal clerks throughout the state of New Mexico, and that's in fact, all over. Personally, I really appreciate the encouragement and support that I've received from you, Mayor, this council, previous mayors, and previous councils, and our town manager, Mr. Brown. I appreciate the encouragement I've received each year to further my training and development. I appreciate the fact that I was able to get certified. I've been the clerk for 11 years now, so I was able to get the certified municipal clerk designation, and then the master municipal clerk designation, so I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate everyone's support, including Mr. Scamron over there, who supports me daily. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. The next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor, no comments.
Councilor Connaught?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a whole list. I'd just like to start with congratulating Ann again on this proclamation. I often say that we're all pretty much replaceable, but you aren't. Without you, we'd have a whole lot of problems, so thank you for all you do for us. The first thing I wanted to mention was that myself and Councilor Ray just returned from the Outdoor Recreation Conference, which was hosted by Senator Martin Heinrich and the New Mexico Wild, I guess is an organization, and at that conference, we learned a lot about outdoor recreation, about the need to focus a little more on ecotourism, so I think both of us came back with a lot of ideas, so hopefully in the next two months, you'll see a few things coming from both of us that'll hopefully improve things a little bit in Silver City as far as outdoor recreation goes. I continue to be really concerned about the four-way stop on Bullard and Sixth Street. Last week, I was at breakfast at one of the corner businesses, and it was 8:30 in the morning, and I watched, I stopped counting at 20, I watched 20 cars go through that intersection, and at least half of them did what I believe is called a California stop, where you just kind of roll through it. One of them was a police officer who did it twice in his car. There was also a person who stayed there longer than they needed to because they were texting. That really concerns me. Someone is going to be injured in that intersection if we don't do something about it, so I'm hoping that perhaps traffic can take a look at that. I'm often there on Saturday mornings, same thing, and during the farmer's market season, that's really a concern for me. The last thing that I have is that I've been approached by a lot of different people who have been reading in the newspaper about the latest museum exhibit at the Silver City Museum, and they've had a lot of questions and concerns, and the questions and concerns are about the exhibits in general at the museum. For the most part, those exhibits have not always, actually, the whole time I've been alive, been reflective of our community. We have a lot of things that come in that are from other places. The last two have been centered on another country, and there's a lot of community people who are very interested in finding a way to make our museum a little bit more reflective. I would like to propose that at some point, we have an exhibit that includes mining, one that includes ranching, one that includes any of the history of Grant County, would be really nice. Right now, when you go, there's a Victorian exhibit, and that's great, but what about the rest of history from, you know, the time the town started until now? So I'm not really sure exactly how we work on that, but I would like to see that happen soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions real quick, like, or two comments. One is to Mr. Brown. Is there any possible way that you could make a study on the Bullard Street right there in front of the Antiques Shop, and the length of the vehicles? We're protruding to the other lane. Is there any...
What do you...
The length, the length of the automobile, they protrude into the other lane, they're too, too long.
Too long. We did do a traffic study. I can look at the traffic study and see what the average length of the vehicle that they looked at on that. That's already been done, we can look at that right now. But then, well, if you want to go visit, we can look at that, and see what you, what else you would like to look at.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is that I will be bringing some language here, probably on the second meeting of June for the side-by-side again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ammons Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank Ann Mackey for all the help that you've given me, as I wanted. I'm an ex-official member of the library, the Public Libraries Board, and I just want to remind the public that the summer programs are going to kick off, and they're going to be awesome. The reading program is signing up now, but for all the way from babies to tweens, there are going to be movies, games, robots, Legos, and every week, there's going to be special performances and guests, ranging from The Magic Guy to the Santa Fe Opera, coming down and doing improv with our community members. So if your 12-year-old says, "Mom, what should I do?", the library.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilor Bedison?
So I too should have said something about thanking Ann, and congratulating her on the proclamation, because like everyone here, you, I rely on you heavily, and I appreciate all the time that you spend making sure that we all are together for the meetings, and that we can do our travel, all those different little things that you do for us throughout the year, I really appreciate, so thank you.
Any other council comments? Councilor Ray?
Correction, it's on Broadway, not Bullard, on Broadway.
Any other council comments? I have a few. I'd like to add my thanks to the rest, to Ann, for all that you do for us. From the very first day that I had been elected as mayor, you've been a really important mentor to me, and have brought me up to speed really quickly, and you've always, you've always offered to help anytime you, you thought I needed help, and I appreciate that very much, because I've needed help a lot. The other thing I have is, or two other things, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a lot of people downtown, and I've talked to, I don't know, quite a few visitors, but several visitors I spoke with had been here several years ago and had come back, and I heard three comments in my conversation about how really nice the flower boxes were downtown, and what a great addition that was to help to beautify our community, and I want to thank Mrs. Staley and his group for doing that. The last thing I had, I guess it's sort of a college professor lean on things, is to ask a question, a test question, and I didn't know the answer to this totally. Does anyone know what two days does federal law require that the American flag be flown at half-staff? Memorial is one. Now, let me, let me, this was in the newspaper.
Fun fact.
Fun fact, but it's important, and it's important for what we'll be doing tonight Today is May 15, which is also National Peace Officers Memorial Day, one of the two days in which federal law requires flags to be flown at half-mast. And I'm just quoting from someone's statement here. "We honor our law enforcement offices every day of the year, but on Peace Officers Memorial Day, we show our support by lowering our flags to half-staff," said Craig Floyd, Memorial Fund Chief Executive Officer. "Our offices deserve the respect of the communities and country they keep safe, and we will do our part by lowering the flags at the memorial in Washington, D.C., where the names of more than 21,000 fallen officers are engraved." National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. As part of National Police Week, the names of 129 law enforcement officers killed in 2017, as well as 231 officers who died in prior years, were formally dedicated on the National Law Enforcement Offices Memorial in Washington, D.C. on May 13, during the 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil. And I would just like to express my appreciation to the law enforcement folks in Silver City for all that you do for our protection, and every day, when our offices leave home, their families literally aren't assured that they will return home in the evening or in the morning, depending on their duty time. And so I'd like to thank all of our police for what they do for our community. I'd like to especially thank Chief Reynolds, he's been a mainstay as our chief in Silver City, and all of his men who work with him, and women who work with him, to take care of this important duty. So thanks again very much. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the April 24, 2018 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ammons Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of April 24, 2018.
Is there a second? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, I second the motion as stated.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public input. However, no one signed up, so we'll go next. On the agenda is reports, and the first item is AA, An Update on the Community Youth Building Program by Mr. Gary Staley. Thank you, Mayor, and councilors. Mr. Marshall told me which ones of these to push. Okay. I went to school at Cliff's, so you have to, I didn't learn that tech stuff. Mayor asked me to give you a brief written report, which I think you have. If there's any of you who don't have that, these photos will be scrolling through, showing some of the activities that we do in community youth building. I just wanted to give you a little history first. Some of you may or may not know, but I spent my entire professional career in juvenile justice. Was the chief juvenile probation officer for three county districts for about 23 years. And we implemented a lot of progressive programs, a lot of initiatives that we wanted to look at moving the services more towards the front end of our continuum. In the early 90s to mid 90s was the peak of delinquency, not only in the state of New Mexico, but in Grant County. We were averaging 110 referrals, 122 referrals per month for delinquency in Grant County at that time, in Grant County alone. And in 1997, began to develop what we call a continuum of services, again, with the emphasis on working towards the front end to identify what the problems were, why our youth were getting into trouble, and what we could do to plug the holes in the boat, so to speak. Because at that time, Chief Reynolds will remember, I think Mr. Brown, Mr. Marshall are not too old, if they remember that, we were simply bailing water as a community, and we decided that we would send somebody down to the bottom of the boat and see where the holes were. And in analogy, a lot of those holes came from truancy, kids not going to school, and so we began to tackle that first, and have had an effective truancy program since 1997. It has evolved, and developed, and matured certainly, but we began also to develop some other programs. When I left juvenile probation in 2010, our average referrals to the juvenile probation office had dropped from, I think I said 122, it was 107, 107 referrals per month, down to 22 referrals per month for delinquency. Chief Reynolds will definitely remember those, that era. And after I retired, I kept in touch with that office, and we began to focus on some areas that we felt that we hadn't done a very good job on. And one of those areas, we could, we have done a really good job of keeping youth corralled, either through probation or through informal services, but once the gate was open, and they were no longer under court or juvenile probation jurisdiction, they didn't have the competency to go out and do the things that they needed to, to become productive citizens. So in 2014, we began to look at what we could do, it's called Restored Justice Model, and one of those, it's a three-legged stool, so to speak, and one of those legs is developing competency in our youth. And so hence, now you have the Community Youth Building Program, and we look at, we look at that in both ways. Community youth building, meaning we build both community and we build youth, and those strengthen one another. The other thing I need to tell you is that in all of this, probably nearly 30 years of experience now, the youth that we serve in most of these programs, most of these youth are not college-bound, and therefore, most of these youths stay in our community, and we owe them the best future that they can possibly have by staying here. And one of the ways that we can offer them a better future is to help them develop marketable skills where that they can get a job. So you've seen some of the projects, and these are just a few of the projects that we put on the rolling slides so for you. Now, there's the few that are not youth in there, you'll see here in a second, I think you probably maybe already went past it, you saw, you saw Councilor Connaught, and she's young, but she's not quite in the juvenile age, but she sat down there with us for four solid hours, and the mayor was there, and we have a picture of the mayor, and he takes a pretty good picture with a paintbrush, and Mr. Marshall was there. But as we scroll through these, what we have here now is the planter program. This is just two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, we did the little, we did the little butterfly garden at Penny Park. That was a park that was planted by a 4-H project with a small grant, I think from PNM, but wasn't maintained, and never was installed with a automatic irrigation system. So one of our first projects was to build that fence, and it's interesting that that fence has been up for almost four years and has never been damaged in any way. There's been no graffiti on it, it has not, it could easily be kicked over, it's just one by six bolted to. There's 30 bags of leaves from just that one little area at Penny Park, in the butterfly section. Here, we are working at the volunteer center, the youth are learning to garden. They learn that growing a tomato is not just an overnight thing, that there is a law of the harvest. And we always, I always have my planter material with me, in case we finish a project early, or we have 20 youth that we don't have enough projects for, for the day, I will pull out all my planter stuff, and we will start building planters. So far, we, that's been one of our most successful ones, has been the planter project, because we now have approximately 30 planters set out downtown, and I will remind the public that it's community youth building's job to construct them, they're made out of throwaway pallets, and the sheet metal comes from Master Craft, they donate that scrap metal to us. So it's our job to build and to plant, it's the merchant's job to water, and we want to continue to encourage them. Habitat Humanities, one of our partners, we just scrolled past, I think, some stuff that we've done. We've got a lot of work at your museum. Somebody might be familiar with the decision of what to do with the floating wooden walkway, and it had some problems, and almost got sent back to the supplier, but we're able to go in and help redo that and make that very manageable for the people to walk on. James, can I stop it right there? How do I stop it?
Good luck.
Oh, okay. Well, the most interesting thing to me about the project in Councilor Connaught's district was the town sent out 60 letters to adjoining property owners to come and join with us on that day. We're not sure how many came from the, from the letters, but we had four young boys that showed up, and we gave them a paintbrush, and they just enjoyed it and went to town. But the most interesting thing was they came back after the project was completed, and Mr. Marshall and Mayor Ladner was there, and we were sort of debriefing on the day, and how this project went, because we know we have three more projects for each of you councilors coming up. And so we invited those boys to come over, and they were probably seven and eight years old, and they came back to the basketball, to play basketball, and we were able to ask them, what would make that part better? And the first thing they said was new basketball nets, and the second thing they said was, put a second swing up, because one of the, it was just a two-swing framework, and one of the swings was gone. And the third was a water fountain, had the capacity to put one in, but obviously had probably been put in a number of times and broken. And the fourth one was to resurface the basketball surface. And so when we got to the water fountain, I said, now, if we put one in, if the mayor puts one in, will you commit that you're going to watch over that and make sure that nobody damages it? And, I mean, they were pretty excited, excited to be involved in that process, and one, meeting the mayor, although I'm not sure they even know what the mayor was, but they got to meet the mayor and the former mayor, and I think that was an experience that I hope they'll remember. So that was the most important part of the whole day for me. But I just want to thank the town for the incredible partnership that has been formed with this program, and particularly these youths. Often, the mayor will find out, text me and say, "Where are you guys today?", and I'll tell him, and he'll show up, and to just meet these young people. And they're incredibly young people. They range in age generally from 12 to 17. Last year, we served 182 individual youth in the program. I'll probably get in trouble for saying this, but often, the girls outwork the boys, and they kind of set themselves up to challenge one another. So do you have any questions? Anything that you would like me to comment on further? Councilor Ammons Smith?
First, I want to thank you so much for the work that you and these kids do, they are just delightful. I've had an opportunity to work with some of them, and they're just wonderful, wonderful people. My second, my question is, you had commented, and I think it's really important, that these youth that are in this program, part of your program is developing skills. So I can see that they're developing like measurement skills to make things, and cutting, and nailing, and painting, and stuff like that. And I know that you partner with the bike works, so that they learn how to do that kind of mechanical stuff. What other kinds of skills are you working towards them developing? Because I can think of a whole bunch that are really needed in our community, and will be needed even more in the next 15, 20 years.
We have, that's interesting, because Mr. Brown and I just had a discussion prior to this meeting. Our next... Our next goal towards maturity for this program will be developing apprenticeships. And we actually have about a dozen of our youth who have applied for the apprenticeship program at the Volunteer Center. They offer a program in the summer where they get paid as stipend for working three mornings a week for about three or four hours each time. I'm not sure what direction we're going to take that, but I'm working with Freeport, I mean with Freeport today, to see if we can get some initial funding to help pay stipends for these youths to be in programs that they then would look to hire these skills. And I have a daughter that has taught at Opportunity High School. I have a son that runs the college-bound program at the high school itself. And we're really looking at helping youth be job-ready, those who are not college-bound, be job-ready when they leave high school. And that's, that's one of our goals with this program is because most of these youths will either owe twenty, they'll be there for four Saturdays up to probably thirty or forty Saturdays. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we definitely would want to sit down with you and others to say, what do you, what would you like us to develop skill-wise?
I'd love to do that. I'd love to do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Daley.
Any other questions or comments?
The thing that really impressed me about it, the whole program, is that, you know, you could have easily, I had all these youths and gone out and did projects like picking up trash or leaves and stuff like that, but you've developed a program where these youths will come back and they'll see that flower box and say, you know, I worked on that flower box. And they begin to gain a sense of community pride. And I think that's an important part of it, too. Thank you very much, Mrs. Daley.
If I could make one comment on that. We had a youth who was in the program, the prior program, which was mostly picking up trash. And the youth would come back the next week and there would be just as much and more trash to pick up. So it was not very meaningful to them. We do a project somewhere in the community every Saturday morning. And one of the things we're going to do actually is develop a website or connect to the town's website so that people who would like to come and volunteer, because you can see one of our goals, the third goal on this sheet that I handed you is to provide positive developmenters. And that's crucial. And it doesn't have to be formal. The informal mentorship has actually proven to be the most effective. So, Mr. Brown, do you have anything you want to add? I mean, I should not say, I'd be lying to you if I told you that it didn't cost the town a dime, because I nickel and dime Mr. Brown to death on small projects, but you don't have to agree with me on that.
I get texts from you all the time, can you come up with this, can you come up with that? But I remember when, at the landfill, they were out there cleaning, picking up trash all the time and you're struggling to get kids out there until we decided to go ahead and start doing some recycling promotion. I think that was the big one that, that caught me, was once the, the kids were able to start, rather than just pick up trash, they were handing out educational material, doing surveys, interacting with the public in positive ways. I think that really helped both the kids and the public that were driving through, getting a different impression of these, of these guys as, you know, they're not troubled, they're out here doing something very positive and is beneficial to both the community and the kids. And that was one early one that stuck out.
We'll be there this Saturday. That's where we'll be this Saturday. That's the project.
And I noticed Mr. Marshall is right there with you, too, and helping to set up these workdays and help you get that going.
Yeah, I've been very, couldn't ask for a better partnership as far as the program's concerned. The town has been incredible.
Thank you very much.
James, how do I shift this off? Mr. Brown, did you want to say something?
James has got something.
Just to follow up a little bit on Gary's presentation, the Purple Wall project that was on the slides was also the District Four Town and Silver City Charter Day. And so we piggybacked on several, several different groups were able to come in and participate and make that event a success. And that being said, the next day is going to be in District One on June ninth. And we'll be working up at Hidden Park, which is, if you take Thirty-Eighth Street, you'll see a stairwell, or a stairway that goes up a hill about in the middle of the street. It's a pretty short street. And it looks like a stairway that goes to nowhere, but actually there is an old, old park up there and needs some sprucing up. And so we're encouraging the community to come out, spruce up the park, and while you're there, tell us what you'd like to see in that park. So we get community input.
Thank you. Councilor Madison, this is in your district. Would you like to say a few things about it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Marshall, for talking about it because apparently I'm so tired from moving. I was back into Fleming Hall for two days so far out of a five-day week that it just slipped my mind until Gary was talking and I was horrified. But I'm excited about this. We really, if, if anyone has any ideas even before the day about what they might want to see, that, you know, please let me know and I'll pass it on to Mr. Marshall so that we can, you know, talk about other options for the park. It'll be, I have seen the stairwell and always wondered where it went. And someone told me that that was Hidden Park up there. I had to go up there myself, but we'll hopefully be able to go up and see it before we start working on it. I think this is going to be, it's going to be pretty exciting. I know that the community that's around there, that there have been over the years people that have actually done some work. But I think if we can spruce it up and make sure that folks know that there's another park, Hidden Park, that it hopefully won't be so hidden anymore. And if there's any information that you want, if you want to join us, no matter what district you live in, please contact me or contact Mr. Marshall at the Community Development Department so that we can get this information to you about what time. It starts at nine and it goes till one P.M. at Hidden Park. And between Thirty-Eighth Street and Forty-first Street, the main entrance is on Thirty-Eighth Street. And there's limited, there's street parking available on Thirty-Eighth Street. And then there's, what'd you say it was like a, it'll be a graded dirt road?
There's a few cars on the east side of Hidden Park. And we'll have that smoothed out a little bit, so not exactly ADA-compatible, but as close as we can get to that.
And as you said, an email, a Prius could drive up there. So if I can get my Prius up there, then, then most folks will be able to do that if they, they drive a little vehicle. So please call five-seven-five, five-three-four, six-three-four-nine, or stop by the Community Development Department at twelve-oh-three North Hudson if you would like more information. And you can also enter your volunteer preferences on the town's website. So you can be in any district and do any one of the charter days. And so I'm looking forward to this. I just want to check, we already have the dog waste station up at the top of Nineteenth?
I'm not sure if it's actually physically there yet, but it will be very soon.
Okay, so that was one of the other things that I wanted to make sure, especially with the neighbors in the area have been asking that for years. So at the top of Nineteenth, there should be a dog waste disposal station. And it's really just for dog waste rather than a trash can per se, correct?
The dispenser itself dispenses little-
Dog waste-
Little hand-sized poopy bags.
And poopy bags.
And one at a time. And then, and it's right at the end of the street. There's a chain-link fence.
Right.
And then there's, there's actually already a pole that has nothing on it, so we'll be placing that on that pole.
Great. Thank you very much and hope folks will join us in, at Hidden Park on June ninth.
Thank you, Councilor Madison. Next item is a eight-B. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, I've got an announcement.
Chief Reynolds, Captain Portillo, can you please come up here? You know, the chief has worked for the town for like a hundred and five years or something. But I think it's more like thirty-five, thirty-seven years? Thirty-seven years. And, you know, he's worked up through the ranks. He retired as the Assistant Chief. And when the town really needed somebody to step up into the role of chief again, actually, he came back as a regular patrol officer for, for like a year and a half because he just wanted to get back into the, into the business and helping the town. And he, he came in at a time that we really needed him. And he, he stepped into the shoes of the chief and he's done an excellent job for a long time. But he's decided that it's time to move on. And I really, really want to thank him for everything that he's done for the town, for me. And I really appreciate it. So his last day working will be May twenty-fifth. He's got some, some leave time, so he'll be on the books for, for a few months, for a while still. So on the twenty-sixth, Captain Freddie Portillo will be our new acting chief. So, you know, you've seen him at the council meetings here before. He will be our, be the man until we finalize the situation later on. So, you know, first, if you want to say something?
Mayor City Council, let me go ahead and read my last staff's report. Should take about an hour. Anyway, on a serious note, I put together a speech and threw that speech away. I thought it was important to speak from the heart. Sincerely, I've spent thirty-seven total years serving this community. And I want to thank the city council, the mayor, previous city councils and mayors for their support and your guidance and your direction that you have taken this city. Also want to thank Robert, Alex, James, and the rest staff of the, of the Town and Silver City. You truly have a professional administration in this city. They hold accountability, they hold standardization. It's extremely important in this age and time. As Royal Mayor, thank you for your comments on law enforcement. I appreciate that very much. It needs to be said. I want to thank the men and women of the Silver City Police Department, not only the sworn personnel, but also our civilians, though. They work tirelessly to hold up that standard, provide a service to the citizens of Silver City. And one thing about being in law enforcement, it's not a job. And all officers understand that. It's a noble cause. We take on this profession when we're in a work. We handle a lot of variety of issues within our community. And our officers are very good. They receive the best training. They will move this department forward. And I commend each and every one of them for taking up this noble cause because really and truly, that's what it is. It's a profession. We may not make it home protecting strangers, but that's the path we chose. It's a path to the garden. And each and every one of them are dedicated to this community. I want to thank the citizens of this community for their support and their input to our department. Captain Portillo, you're in the interim, will take this department forward. He's a great officer, very knowledgeable, very professional. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor, City Council, town management. I'll probably get in advance on having some allergies and a cough going on. As most of you know, I've been a lifelong resident of Silver City and I've worked with the Silver City Police Department for about twelve years now. Having a great work ethic and a positive, having a positive impact on our community is very important to me. I want to take the time to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to be an interim police chief for the town of Silver City. I want to thank Chief Reynolds for recommending me as interim chief of police. I'm truly grateful, being able to learn from him over the past twelve years. He has worked very hard setting a solid foundation within the Silver City Police Department. In return, I believe it has shown that the members of the police department work hard and show great professionalism. I do also want to take the time to thank my entire family, which includes my in-laws, for all their support. I do especially want to thank my wife. She has always been supportive of me, which I believe in return has helped me become successful and has helped me tremendously to dedicate my services to the community of Silver City and to the Silver City Police Department. My father, Alfred Portillo, and my mother, Angie Portillo, have always had a major influence in my life as positive role models. My parents have always taught me, no matter what you do in life, you better try your best, do it well, and you make it work. With that being said, as interim chief, I plan to build and move forward of what has already been established within the community and the police department. I look forward to working with all of you to continue to build public relations and public trust within our community by taking another step towards community policing. I also plan to continue to be proactive within the Silver School District. I'm currently a board member for the truancy program and I believe it is very important to have a positive impact on our youth. As interim chief, I can assure you that I will continue to be proactive as well as all members of the Silver City Police Department. We will continue to do what's best for the citizens of Silver City and the police department. Public safety will always be number one. Our one priority now within the department is to look at all available options and temperate to structure administration with best fits, in the best interest of the department. We do here currently have two openings and are in the process of hiring more officers. We're going to be doing testing and during this time, we will be very thorough during the selection process moving forward, which I think is very important. I want to thank you again for this opportunity and I'm truly grateful and blessed. Thank you very much.
Does the council have any comments they'd like to make?
I just really want to thank Freddie for stepping up. You know, I know it's, when you step into a position such as the chief, it starts, it takes up a lot of your time. He's a young man, he's got a young family, and it's going to take away from them for a while. And so I really appreciate for him being willing to step up for this community. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does the council have any comments? Do the council have any comments they'd like to make? Councilor Edison?
I would like to congratulate Chief Reynolds on his retirement and thank him for his years of service. I've known you for a long time, and not just as the chief, but for the twenty-eight years I've been here, I've known who you are and that you're very dedicated to your job. And I appreciate you and want to thank you publicly. And then I also want to congratulate Captain Portillo on his upcoming interim chief status. And I hope this means that he might think about applying for it. Something that you will have to talk with your wife about, I'm sure, and your family. But, but congratulations to you both for two different things. And, um, thank you both for your service and thank you to the officers that are standing in the back. Thank you for your service to the town of Silver City.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Smith?
I too want to say thank you to our officers, uh, to the new interim chief. And special, I want to thank you, Chief Reynolds, for always taking time whenever I had difficult questions, to spend time with me and to explain things and to listen attentively to any concerns that I had. Uh, when I read the police blotter in the newspaper every, every week, I think, oh my gosh, I'm so glad those guys are out there. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Chief, for your service. And I believe that you made a wise and good choice in getting Mr. Portillo to follow in your footsteps. I've known Mr. Portillo and I've known his family for many, many years. And I want to thank you guys on the bottom of my heart also. Congratulations.
Any other comment? Councilor Connor?
Um, I'd just like to also thank Chief Reynolds for his service. And, um, I've known Captain Portillo for quite a long time too, and I know he's a very responsible person and I think he's going to do a great job as interim chief and I'm looking forward to working with him. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Scavron?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've worked with the chief very closely from the day that he showed up as chief. And I just have a couple of things I'd like to say publicly. Yeah, I know you don't want me to talk very much, so I just, I just wrote down-
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you too. I just have a few adjectives I'd like to apply to my experience and what I've come to know about Chief Reynolds. I wrote down very quickly, I hadn't planned anything, about the things that he has impressed me with. And they are intelligence, integrity, compassion, patience, bravery, and a commitment to this town. So for those attributes, which are not that common these days, I want to thank him and recognize him for that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Scavron. Mr. Brown, uh, are you in a position now to give us a rough schedule of putting together a committee and then going through the interviews and then hiring a permanent, uh, position chief?
Yes, um, what I was planning on doing was putting together an interview committee made up of, um, James, Chief Reynolds, and then we're going to get some community members put on the, um, on the committee as well. I think I'm looking at a committee of five. I don't want to make it too big. Uh, we're going to do a national search. And, and once this committee narrows it down to the top candidates, then I want to have a, uh, a reception so the community can come and meet them. So that way I can get feedback from the, both the committee and the community. And then I'll do my own individual, um, interviews of the finalists and, and move forward from there. Um, I don't have a schedule yet because I, I want to focus on the transition first, uh, make sure everything's working, uh, before I, I look at moving forward. Any questions or recommendations? Councilor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to see if when you bring in the top candidates, that there be not just a reception, but sort of maybe a forum to, for the community to kind of know that their perspective on, on, on being in a small town, being in Silver City, and then, and then their policing, you know, their sort of, uh, command strategy, you know, how Hollywood be. And, and I think that, I mean, I don't know if you do that each time you bring someone in, or if you do it in one fell swoop.
I would rather do it in one fell swoop because if we're going to compare people, we need to compare them at the same time.
I mean, I think there may be some-
Yeah, I mean, sometimes people feed off each other.
Um, I mean, you know, I would want to know independently so that maybe during that time that they would not, that other candidates would not be in the room, so that we can understand what each person thinks. So, if do the, you can do the forum if, if it works that way on one day, but that there be different, like, you know, twenty minutes for each candidate separately. Just because, yeah.
We'll work three.
But I mean, I think there's a lot of, but that's just a recommendation, a suggestion. Thank you.
Councilor Connor?
Frequently when people are hired at Western, they do something very similar to that where they have, like at the library, they have a community time when you can go in and listen to them. And like she said, they do it separately. So I don't know, you might want to ask them about it because they, they usually do pretty well with those and get a lot of community.
Okay, any other comments? Any other thing, Mr. Brown?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Smith?
Actually, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for a short break.
Do we have a motion for a short break? Is there a second?
There's very second.
If in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a ten-minute break. I'll call our being back to order, please. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, um, 11, a new business. The first item is 11A, the approval slash disapproval of special dispenser permit application for the Neely Nun Bike Run, uh, event at 101 East College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico on May 25th through 26th, 2018, with alcohol service from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Sponsor Q Southern Bistro LLC, liquor license holder, Dahl Enterprises LLC, DBA Q's Southern Bistro, liquor license number 28098, 101 East College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. And I think, Mr. Anthony Cantana could make the presentation?
Hi, how are you all doing? So, we're just doing the annual bike run that we usually do for our yearly anniversary and the Blues Festival. And we got together with, uh, some other locals to help us organize the bike run this year. And we have a couple more events down there and we're doing kind of a little mini, uh, best of show for the Bike Arts Council. Kevin, he asked us if we could take over that this year because I guess they didn't do it last year and they wanted to see if we could, uh, head that operation just since we do the bike run every year. So we're doing stuff like that and we'll be giving out plenty of prizes and awards and just trying to get a beer garden set up down there like we usually do and music. The only thing that I did see is that it says from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. That's for Friday. And then Saturday would be from noon until 11:00 PM. I think I wrote that on the, yeah, I think I wrote it on the, on the liquor license application, on the dispenser application. It says Friday on what time and then Saturday. Oh, does it? Okay.
Is everything in order, Mr. Brown?
Maybe he just says four to eleven. He just has to, has to add the Saturday times to it, that's all.
Okay.
Friday's 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And then, but on the road closure thing, I believe I wrote 10:00 AM, just so that way we could get everything set up for the-
Yeah, he's got the, everything for the road closure already taken care of. Yeah, this thing.
Any questions for the, from the council? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connor?
I move to approve a special dispenser permit application for the Neely Nun Bike Run event at 101 East College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, on May 25th, 26th, 2018, with alcohol service from noon. Okay, so am I going to, from 4:00 to 11:00 PM on Friday and from noon to 11:00 PM on Saturday, correct? Um, sponsor Q Southern Bistro LLC, liquor license holder, Dahl Enterprises LLC, do business as Q Southern Bistro, liquor license number 28098, 101 East College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico.
Is there a second? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I second that as written.
Any discussion? Any questions or comments from the general public on this application? If there are none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, 11B, the approval slash disapproval of an agreement between the town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police, Silver City Police Officers Association. Councilor, uh, Aiman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 10-15-1H for the following reason, meeting to discuss, for discussion of bargaining strategy preliminary to collective regarding bargaining negotiations.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Councilor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, the second motion stated, I think we have to list the number, um, H5?
Five, yeah.
Oh, yes, I did, sorry.
Five.
Shall I restate or is that just, could be added? Um, is that okay to add? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
I just, just take a second.
Okay. We have a second by Councilor Edison. Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
We'll take a very brief recess, uh, for those who want it, and then the council will convene in the conference room for executive session. The council is back in open session. No matters other than those matters included in the motion to go into executive session were discussed. At this time, I will out ask the council members for their affirmation of that statement. Ann, roll call, please.
Councilor Connor?
Aye. Is that right? I'm sorry.
Councilor Ben?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
The motion was unanimous, or the vote was unanimous. The next item is, uh, or the item that we left on was 11B, the approval slash disapproval of an agreement between the town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police, Silver City Police Officers Association. Mr. Brown?
Council, do you want me to go over what we, the changes or, um-
The overall summary?
The overall summary is that I negotiated with them for probably a two-year contract. It took us about forty-five minutes to get it all done. Um, it's costing us about forty-three thousand dollars this year. It's a two-year contract that should cost us around the same next year. So it's not a huge amount. Uh, but it's, it's a move to, you know, it's very hard to recruit and keep police officers these days. I mean, ever since I start, started. And when I started with the town, the average length of service for a non-officer, uh, just a regular patrol officer, the average length of service that we had was three years. The average length of service now is, I believe it's six to eight years. So we're able to keep them a lot longer. And with that, you get, um, experience, not just with the job, but with the community. Um, and so I think it's very important that we are able to keep qualified, good officers. So this is a move to do that. Any questions?
Do we hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of an agreement between the town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police, Silver City Police Officers Association.
Mr. Mayor, a second and motion?
We have motion and second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Next item is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of intent ordinance number 1267, adoption of the town of Silver City election code. And I'll ask Mr. Scavron to, uh, give us a report on this particular item.
As you might be aware, the, uh, state legislature passed the Local Election Act. Uh, this basically is a game changer for most municipalities throughout the state. Uh, the town took a position that our territorial charter was unique and a provision of our territorial charter says that we get to determine how to do our local elections. Uh, and there was a contest in the state legislature about the rights of a territorial charter and the power of the state legislature to overcome those powers. Due to extensive, uh, work by staff led by, uh, the town manager and James Marshall, who was up in Santa Fe fighting the good fight, and the support of Ann Mackey and, uh, myself here and there, uh, we prevailed getting the state legislature to recognize the existence of our territorial charter, which is, I believe, the first time the legislature has actually, in its history since 1912, has actually recognized the validity of the Silver City territorial charter. The territorial charter provides that the town shall describe the manner of regulation and conduct of local elections. There is a provision, it's not the surface language, but it is language that I can interpret to be that the town charter provisions are predominant over what the Local Election Act provides for. So, we need to, since the Local Election Act will cause the repeal of the Municipal Election Act, which is the act that the town adopted many years ago to be its code. So what we're going to be left with is, we will not have a code. We will, we're not subject to the Local Election Act requirements because, by virtue of the, uh, the territorial charter. And in pursuant to the authorization of the territorial charter, the town has, can make its determination of what election code it chooses to operate under. We've had success with the municipal election code for all these years. And if something works well and it's not broken, there's no reason to fix it. So what this NOI does is adopts the language of the municipal election code as it may exist the day before it's going to be repealed. We can make fine tunings on it as time goes on, but this, uh, this is a recommendation, this NOI is to adopt the municipal election code, make it the town's code, notify the, our code publishing company that we wish to have that as our code and that they will renumber it and it'll be ours. We will not be sharing code with the state anymore. This will be our local municipal election code. And I've looked, uh, done legal research on it. It's never been attacked for any reason. It guarantees, uh, uh, fair elections. It guarantees all the remedies for problems. And, uh, it has a, a track record, a good track record. So the recommendation is that we adopt the municipal code, the municipal election code as it may exist the day before it's repealed.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilor Edison?
So, Mr. Scavron, the way we have been, uh, our clerk has been conducting the elections and the town's been conducting elections since that adoption many years ago, of- and the town's been conducting elections since that adoption many years ago, of the municipal code will continue. We will not take office on April 1st. We will continue with the procedures that are in the, the current code.
Nothing will, nothing from our past year's elections will change. The staggered terms will continue, the March elections will continue, the place of voting will continue, the protections will continue, and the only thing that we'll have to do pursuant to this legislation is notify the Secretary of State when we're going to do it, include it in our election proclamation. Now, the authorization to proceed will come from the Secretary of State's office, and there's no reason to believe that that will be denied.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ann, will you be meeting with the county clerk to talk about the fact that we will be conducting our elections and the county won't be conducting them?
Yes, sir. If this ordinance is adopted, I will contact the county clerk to have those discussions.
Any other questions for Mr. Scavron or for Ann? Mr. Brown, do you want to say anything?
You know, the only thing that I want to say is, James put a lot of work into this. And I really appreciate, you know, this was the one big project that he, he worked on a lot of projects while he was up there, but this was the one big one. And I think the fact that the, the state formally recognized territorial charter was, is a huge coup that James was able to pull off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Motion. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Edison?
I move to approve of notice of intent number 1257, adoption of the Town of Silver City Election Code.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ayman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Next item is 11D, budget discussion with the council for fiscal year 2018 slash 2019. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, you have the budget that I presented to you a few weeks ago. It's basically the same thing. There hasn't been any major changes. I think we talked about recycling and the sanitation fund. We are going to have to pay more for recycling to continue to recycle the way that we are right now because of the cost. That, I recommend that we can, we continue doing this until we have enough time to really have some good discussions on where we need to go from here. But I worked it out so that we continue, can continue doing what we're doing and afford to pay the additional cost that it's going to cost us without a rate increase. I am not going to propose any rate increases in either the water sewer fund or the sanitation fund. We're as able to work everything out so that we don't have to do that. Grocery thieves taxes, though, we are going to have to, and we're going to recommend that we pass one of the hold harness 1/8 increments to be effective January 1. That is included. So that added about $98,000 to this year's budget. With that, almost all of the departments, there was a 0% operating budget, it's, they all stayed flat, maybe. I think the library, I shorted them some funds last year that I added back in. We did have a 4% increase on our health insurance, which was included in there. The union contracts and negotiations that we did with the police is in here. I did complete negotiations with the fires that I'll bring with you in early June. That is in here. You know, if it doesn't, if you don't approve it when it comes to you in June, then we can have it removed on the final budget. But with that, I think the only other thing that I really need some feedback from you is on lodgers tax. Lodger's tax is about 16% higher this year than what I had budgeted. I had budgeted a 1.5% increase. It's about 16% higher so far this year. And, you know, we had, the way it works, I have to transfer the money that we're, we do the awards for into a separate fund, and it usually takes me all year to get enough money to do the whole, all the transfer. I was able to complete the transfers three months ago for that. So now we're just building up a fund balance in the lodger's tax fund. But with that, you know, we've been having this tourism coordinator working for us and doing research and surveys and all kinds of things for, since August, September, maybe, this September. And with all the information that they've, they've brought in, she started making some recommendations to, to me. Some of the things that she found, I have the, she gave me a report that I'm happy to set forward to you. But basically, what she's found with the first events this year, and she was able to find the, include the information from the tour de Gila this year. But for instance, Labor Day. Labor Day, we had the Taste of Downtown, the Print Fiesta, the Gemmin' Mineral Show, and the Grand Fondo. They did surveys at all three events. We had individuals surveying people that attended the events. What we found was that the Print, the Taste of Downtown, and the Gemmin' Mineral Show, when they did their advertising, even though they were all on the same day, they didn't reference any of the other activities going on in town. And so almost no one knew about any of the other events that were happening downtown. So, and they got some feedback where if I had known, we would, because they were having a great time at the event that they were attending, they were getting feedback like, you know, we would have known, we would have stayed a couple more days. But the one difference was that during, for the Grand Fondo, the SkyWest Media did the marketing for Jack for them, and when they did their marketing, they marketed with social media primarily, their websites and everything. But the difference is, they referenced the other events. And what they found was that although they were targeting male, primarily male writers, middle-aged male writers with the higher incomes, they all brought their spouses and they stayed multiple days because their spouse had something else to do, plus they wanted to do it themselves. So they didn't just stay for the one-day event, they, they stayed for multiple days. And so, you know, taking this approach, you know, it's hard for the individual organizations, you know, they're good at putting on the event. I mean, nobody had any complaints about any of the, of the events. It was just, we didn't know. And that comes down to marketing and advertising. And, and, and we found that, and they've been doing, the tourism coordinator has been doing some test sampling in different markets of what, say, for instance, what do you think of, when you think of New Mexico? Well, they think of the desert. That's not us. And so we, we've got to change those perceptions. And what's the easiest way is, and cheapest way we've done was to, to focus on social media, website, and focus more there rather than print media. You know, I see, you know, the New Mexico troop, most of that is done on print media, and it's on certain magazines. Well, if you're hiring, I mean, you're targeting millennials, do you want to put it in True West Magazine? I don't think so. So, you know, it's my recommendation that, and it's the tourism coordinator's recommendation, that rather than putting out the big, big award, RFP, for the events to ask for money to do their own marketing, is that we allow them an application process because they can get money for the porta-potties, for, you know, the other things that are allowed by lodger's tax. Allow them to add, request money for those other items. It'll be an application process, say, for up to $5,000. Then I turn that over to the lodger's tax committee, and they can make recommendations on that. But then, at the same time, I would like to take the majority of the money and do an RFP for a marketing company that all of them will have to work with. And the individual events can choose to, what is my market, my target market? Well, then it's up to the marketing organization to turn around and say, okay, these are, these are the social media types of Facebook or Instagram. I don't know all the things, but these are the types of social medias that, that target millennials more. So let's focus there. But at the same time, we want to, later on, in this fiscal year, we would like to bring branding recommendations to the council to adopt, and we would like to work with the counties so that we all advertise under the same general branding, brand. And I've been working with Charlene, and I think we're on the same page here. But the social media, I mean, the marketing company can ensure that all the advertising is done with the same mark, same branding. And it's all, all the same. And so with that, I, I would recommend that I put aside a much smaller amount that they can apply for under regular application process, and it's much faster because we don't have to do the RFP, and they can be looked at as we get them. And then take a larger amount and do an RFP for a, for a marketing company to do the marketing for everybody.
Any, any questions or any more discussion, Counselor Connell?
That's a great idea. Something I was hoping that might possibly be funded if we had a little bit of extra money is to change our website. I think the town website is boring on a good day, and if tourists are looking at that first, then they're probably thinking, ah, why should I go there? So if we could do something to improve that, is going along with the branding and all of that, if that could be part of what the media?
Yeah, I think that's what we, that's very important, because that's the first place that they're going to, if they're going to Google us, they're going to go there. So, you know, we want the branding to start right there. And I know the county's already working with the company because they, they've realized that their website needs some work and stuff. So, yeah, we, we're, that's the direction I want to move. So when I bring the final budget to you, next council meeting, well, not the final one, but the preliminary one that we have to adopt since Santa Fe, it's going to be set up so that I'm holding back a much larger portion for professional services, and then setting a smaller amount aside for those smaller.
Counselor Edison?
Okay. So you're talking, like you said, about port-a-potty, extra police, you know, that's, is that the sort of application you're looking at? What are we going to need?
Well, there's a, there's a lot of things. I'll send you a copy of that. I've already got a preliminary application and a list of everything. I will send you a copy of that.
So can I also recommend that if we're going to, if this, I mean, because it sounds great, that it actually be an article written? Is Lisa going to do that?
We're going to meet next week, and that is the thing that I wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I think that we need to, you know, make sure that everybody understands the process and why we're doing this, and that it's, so that if we have four things happening on Labor Day weekend, everybody's going to know about those four things, and that they can bring additional people and stay additional days, which is what we want.
Yes, that's.
Okay.
And, you know, I want to start moving this direction, you know, this isn't the final where we're going to be, but because now the tourism coordinator, they're getting into the big events, and we might learn some different information. So we might want to change a little bit later on during this fiscal year. But, you know, she, Sabrina, will be bringing a report after the big events. And so, I mean, there's a lot of exciting things, a lot of, I mean, things as small as the streetlights downtown. I learned that the complaints about the streetlights downtown, the first survey, and I was able to fix it within, you know, two weeks. And after that, the surveys were, the lights look great downtown. And so, you know, just being able to gather that information has been a huge help.
So you will send us some of this?
I'll send you the application that she recommended and the report that I received.
That would be wonderful for us, I think.
Counselor Connell?
Is it possible for us to send some kind of an email or some kind of a notice to people that apply for lodger's tax that it might change a little, just so they don't just come in?
Yeah.
Or hide and call them out?
What I'll do is I'll, I'll get a list from Ann, and we'll put an email together and fill in some of the stuff with the application.
Any other discussion? Counselor Ayman Smith?
I just, I have a quick comment. This is an excellent example of research-based decision-making, which is that, you know, thanks to you and to your collaboration with the county, we're able to get this research written for a year. I personally saw the difference in the Grand Fondo from having the cross-marketing from the year before, where you perhaps remember a student intern group, or student research group did it, and it was a kind of a, not a very well-attended event. And it was well-attended this year.
Because they used SkyWest Media to, to do their targeted marketing.
And the way that they advertised.
The way they advertised. And the target market that they were shooting for increased by 20%.
It was a huge difference, they had a lot of activity. And so just, you know, I just want to say, research works. If you do, you know, do the research well and then make your decisions, it's a much better process. And I want to thank you so much for working so hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Move on to 11E, which is the approval slash disapproval of bid number 17-18-6, sale of inventory. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Counselor? These are the items that were left in the storage facility that burnt. We were reimbursed for these items, and they've been replaced, but some of them are semi-useable. So we did put this bid out, and staff recommends that we award the sale of, approve the sale of the inventory.
Okay. Counselor, go ahead. Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ayman Smith?
I move to approve, let's see, our bid number 17/18-6, sale of inventory as, do I need to read to whom it goes?
No.
Nope? Just the overall? That I move to approve bid 17/18-6, sale of inventory.
Okay. Motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second. The motion has stated.
Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Next item is 11F, the approval slash disapproval of the destruction of town records from the finance department that have met their retention period. The quantity is 23 boxes. Ann?
Yes, Mayor and councilors. These 23 boxes were left in the basement. They should have been included in my last destruction request, but they somehow got a little separated. So they're in the way. We want, we'd like to get your approval to destroy them. They'll be housed in a separate building until we get authorization to really destroy them, and I'd like Mr. Scavron to make some comments.
Any questions for Ann? Mr. Scavron, would you like to say something?
At the end of last year, we received a letter from the Attorney General. As you may be aware, the state of New Mexico is a party to the above-capsured civil litigation in the County of Santa Fe against those legally responsible for the wrongful distribution of opioids in the state of New Mexico. In connection with this litigation, you have a legal obligation to preserve all potentially relevant information, including documents and data in your possession, custody, or control that is, and that in any way relates to the state of New Mexico's allegations.
control, that is, in, that in any way relates to the state of New Mexico's allegations regarding the wrongful distribution of opioids against current and potential defendants. What they, what the state is endeavoring to do is to have local municipalities and local county, and county governments to come up with, uh, to preserve relevant evidence that may bear on the damage being done to towns and counties through the abuse of opioids and the wrongful distribution of opioids. So they're asking us to go through our records and anything that might be relevant, even distantly relevant, to the proving of damages to the community from opioids be retained. So in that process, we are looking through these particular boxes of, of documents. We're going to the people who've turned the documents over, in this case, its finance department, whether there are any documents that they are aware of that would bear on this issue. If we get a clearance from these department heads that there are no documents that are relevant to this kind of litigation, they will be destroyed. The records that are relevant will be preserved pursuant to this letter.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Do we have a motion? Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the destruction of twenty-three boxes of town records from the finance department that have met their retention period, with the exception of any records being relevant, for continued retention pursuant to the Attorney General's evidence hold request associated with the state's opioid lawsuit.
Thank you. Have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Amy Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you.
Council Amy Smith, do you have a motion to approve, or a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.